And for the benefit of our member in the audience, thank you. In the event there's a fire, two means of egress. One to your right through the pair of doors, first left, down the stairs, out into the parking lot, safe distance away from the building. And the second is behind you, right out onto a landing, down the stairs, out into the town green, again, safe distance from the building. All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Normally at this time, I would present to the audience how we're going to conduct business tonight, however, this particular public hearing has been closed. And the purpose of the meeting tonight is for the board to discuss the application. So there will be no input from the audience at all. That being said, for the record, we have a motion to approve by Mary Ann at our September 26th, I think it was September 26th?
Yes.
September 24th meeting. And we have a second by Maurice LaRosa. On our September 24th meeting, we had five regular members in attendance. We have those same five in attendance tonight. Therefore, those five members, as regular members, will be voting tonight. Because a motion has been seconded, all discussion will be amongst those five members only. So the floor is open for discussion.
I believe we tabled this so that we could give an opportunity for the applicant and for the zoning enforcement officer to give us any additional material that we needed because there's some question as to where the actual property line of this property is.
Somewhat correct.
Just wondering if there's any clarification.
We tabled it to give the applicant an opportunity to present the zoning enforcement officer with any additional information.
Right. Do we have anything?
He did call me, and I wasn't aware that he couldn't talk to you directly, so I apologize. He corrected me if I'm wrong unofficially, but he said that he found a way to possibly move the garage back three feet.
Um, no. No, I got the...
No input from the public.
Never mind, never mind. Then, then all I have is the memo that I gave you. You asked for the A2 survey and the topoes, and I gave you a copy of the town GIS, and you asked for a copy of the sewer lateral and the connection. And you'll find that in the memo dated October 16th.
If I could.
What's up? I don't know.
Just give a little bit of information to the board. I've visited this property numerous times, and based upon the information that staff has presented to us, if you look at the A2 survey, or the survey on page A2.
It's this one, right?
It's gotta be.
Yeah.
What that, what that survey does not show is the applicant's rear porch. And that porch, as we know from previous testimony, is 12 by 26. The scale on this survey is 1 inch equals 30 feet. In my calculations, I gave the applicant the benefit of the doubt and made the math easy, and went down to a half inch or 15 feet. So if I took 15 feet off the back of the building and came across parallel with the back of the house, there still is 60 feet of difference from the farthest projection on the back of the, on the back of the premises to the rear property line. The applicant is looking for a 30-foot-deep structure.
Right. I believe that was the same math I came up with at the last meeting.
Right. So we know we have enough distance to go back. Whether or not the applicant chooses to pull any of the trees or trim any of the trees is his decision. Based upon what I found, he has plenty of room to move the garage back.
That's the same thing I saw when I went out there and took my wheel thing. Probably not as fancy as you, but concept-wise.
Yeah, without being able to see the actual pins, but going by the A2 survey is where we, I came up with measurements before, which also showed about 60 feet. That may require moving of some trees or, or whatever, but...
Or at least trimming.
You know, as I stated the last time we met, on this property, topography around the other areas of the yard are concerned, but that all aspects may not have been looked at on this particular spot that he's putting it. And I believe there is plenty of room to move it backwards. Because I myself have been out there a few times and have measured from where the stakes were to where there's a hill in the back, and that hill also is far enough back where he could push the building back right to that point.
I'd also like to point out to the board, based upon the documentation that was submitted to us at our September 24th meeting, the applicant submitted a plot plan, titled page A7. And based upon his drawings and his scales, he's showing he has 60 feet to the property line, but he's showing the structure, the proposed structure, to be moved severely forward. And that, as we now know, that is not the case. Any further discussion? Andrew?
I've been to the property, and there seems to be ample other options where a building permit could be pulled without the variance.
Okay. Charlie?
I agree with Andrew.
Same.
And Mo. That's what I found.
As we have the motion in place and we have the second, all those in favor of approving this application, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, motion is denied 5-0-5-0. Next on our agenda, we have new business. There is none. Within your package, you have the minutes of September 24th of a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. All those in favor, motion passes 5-0. Ginny, staff report?
Um, there's been some items that I created on the COVID package. Someone asked me to do a draft with the zoning enforcement, to ask them to, and the set of bill for the zoning enforcement, and the court had a newsletter, other newsletter, and I just found the, and people like to go to the US land academy.
Ginny.
Sorry. A few of us went to the land use, Advanced Land Use Academy last month, and I was going to print you out copies, but Mr. Brisland sent you all emails on it. So the one main thing I want, I wanted to say was that they really have tightened up on hardships being granted. They've tightened up so there's a little less area for boards to air in. And I think that's it, unless somebody has any questions for me.
Have you read the quarterly newsletter?
No, I haven't read it.
Second article on the front?
Wait a minute.
We should pay attention to that. A building official gave a permit?
Yes.
And then they were issued a cease and desist because they realized that they didn't meet zoning, and the court upheld that it was too late for that.
Yes, I, I apologize. I did read this, but it was so long ago until you started talking about it, I forgot. But this is one of the things I railed about when I was the property maintenance enforcement officer, because our regulations or our, well, that ordinance, but also the zoning regulations state one thing, and the building code states another, and they aren't compatible. And usually, there's ways to work with both departments to come to an end that's helpful to the customer, but sometimes it's just, it's just very, you know.
I think we've, we've actually, in our combined meetings, at some point, I believe we came up with a viable solution?
Yes.
So that this wouldn't happen to us?
Yes.
And I don't know if you guys have implemented it and are doing it? So that every application for building comes in, it goes to everybody? And if you don't need to sign off on it, you just send it away? But if you need to sign off on it, it's there? Because this is, it'll happen if we're not careful.
Yeah, no. The consensus is that all applications are listed on Munis with a Munis number, and you can go in and look at it. But there's like 1,082 there now?
Oh, yeah.
And they're, what, what happens is they're put in by department. In other words, there's building, there's wetlands, there's planning, and then there's zoning. And so sometimes you fail to look at everyone's to see if it overlaps into your area. But I am working on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm confused by that discussion. Planning and zoning and zoning enforcement are the places where the permits are actually start?
Correct.
Not inlands and wetlands, that's just, sends them off to planning and zoning. I, I think we need to continue our diligence, maybe when we have our workshop, if we make a note, that we push for a proper protocol signage, sign-off. It makes no difference if the zoning enforcement officer needs to do it or not, as long as it's checked off. They do the, I don't know which ones, what do they call the thing where the, if a person wants to come in and build something, they come into a meeting that's not really on the record, but they can discuss stuff?
Right, but that, right, site plan review or something. I'm specifically speaking about if our building department issues a building permit?
Right.
That doesn't have to go through planning and zoning, per se.
Right.
But what this states here is somebody issued a permit that violated a zoning regulation.
Right.
The person started building, the zoning enforcement officer went out and said, whoa, wait a minute, stop, you're in violation, and the court upheld that it was too bad, somebody else already told him, go ahead and start.
But we've discussed this.
Right, that's what I was saying.
And using that protocol, we need to get it enacted. It's a good, it will make sure that everything follows along. I don't know what we have to keep doing to bring back to the planning office.
Ginny, weren't we at a point where you were getting no communication? And then at one point, we discussed what other towns were doing, and we looked at our particular building application. And on that, the town of Enfield building application, there are line items in there that departments have to check off.
Yes.
Why is that not happening?
It just isn't. Perhaps we can discuss it, but it, all building permits come into the building department.
Correct.
They're entered into Munis. Linda Campbell's the building tech and the zoning tech, and she has a pretty good grasp of what she's doing, but it's my understanding, I don't know this. She puts the building permit in, in any, oh, there's a drawer with every department's folder in it. And every morning, I go in and I open the drawer and I look, and if, if there's anything for zoning, it's in that folder. If there's not anything for zoning, my folder is empty. It just, it doesn't make routes. You can, as I said, it's my understanding, they feel it's adequate, that it's listed, and if you want to go look on the computer at one specific application number, you can click on it, open it up, and the building permit should be attached to it, and you can look at it, but it might already be approved.
Then why is there even a checkbox or an initial box on the application?
It's, up until a year or so ago, the zoning enforcement officer got everything except electrical and HVAC and plumbing and sewers. And then, if I remember correctly, and I believe you, you all are aware of this, Ray Warren and a few other people sat down to see how they could better simplify the flow. And after that, you know, we've had many conversations on this, even though it says in the plant, the zoning regulations that the zoning enforcement officer will sign off on it, and it does say it in the state statute, it just isn't, they don't feel there's a need, I assume. That's the only thing I can come up with.
The only reason I brought it up again is because it has now appeared as case law here.
I did see that.
And if you remember, a few years back, we did have one come in front of us?
Yes.
Where the applicant said, well, they gave me a building permit, I just thought I could go ahead.
That's what triggered, that's what I thought of.
So, that's, that's why I'm just refreshing.
Yeah. I, I don't look at the 1,082 every day. And as I said, that's all the permits that are in phase of activity. In other words, when someone builds a house, that, that application's going to stay on the computer screen anywhere from, you know, six months to two years, depending on how long it takes to get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So, sorry, I don't have a better answer.
Well, Mary Ann, I think you have an excellent idea. I think that you're in the process of coordinating a workshop, and maybe that workshop has an agenda of more than one item. We've done that in the past with planning and zoning.
Okay, so help me word the agenda items so I can make sure they understand what we want to chat about.
Well, the first one, we're going to talk, the primary one is the seminar that...
Mm-hmm. Right, I have that one.
The groups attended.
Let's just talk...
And the second one is going to be to...
The path of application signatures.
We're going to discuss what's now case law, and find out how we can better improve the system within the town offices so that we don't fall into this category.
I have had a conversation with Jose, and since we're on that subject, and he was looking at the fifth week of January, because that's, we have a fifth week in January, and I've asked him not to go any further than that. Hang on, I gotta get my calendar.
I suggested, he mentioned that to me this evening before I went home, and I suggested to him, if you have a December meeting, even if you have one item, perhaps...
We don't have enough time.
Okay.
Because if we were going to hold it, the reason I'm not in favor of the December meeting is we need to bring all those boards together. This isn't a board just with us and planning and zoning, this is inlands and wetlands, conservation, anybody their brother-in-law.
Right, and if you're doing it in December, you're looking at either Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve.
Or it would have to move up. It would have to move up, and we don't have time. So, and he, I can't believe I don't have a calendar. So January has five weeks.
I don't think they take...
So...
Oh, yeah.
Right, so that, we would be able to have a meeting...
But we're going to have our meeting on the 28th.
Twice. Why the 28th?
Because our meeting is always the last Monday of the month.
And that's 27th. Nope, get in the right month.
28th.
Get in the right year. Right. So we could still have, if we don't have anything, we could hold it that night, or we could hold, have a special meeting anytime that week.
Okay.
And I asked Jose to please move forward, and it's the town attorney that we want here. This isn't, you know, Maria's a nice gal and all works well, but we need to have Kevin here. So my request to him was, call Kevin or respond to his office and give him three dates in that week, and he has to pick one.
Okay.
So that we can get everyone here and have time to review the documents, so we can have a discussion and not have to waste time getting brought up to speed. So I will go back and send an email out tomorrow to you, to him reiterating it again and adding an agenda item. And maybe Charlie or Inlands and Wetlands might have something, and they might want to add something. So...
Yeah, we can open it up.
We need to hang, I'm going to make sure we hang on to this.
Yes.
So I will make sure that's put in there.
So, Ginny, anything else?
Oh, no, that's it.
What's the pipeline awareness thing that we've got here?
I, I gave that to you just because it was discussing all the different types of markings. And I thought, since you all go out to look at the properties, if you ever saw a marking and you weren't sure what it was, this would give you a little background.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, have we approved dates for next year?
That's next on the agenda.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know if it was on the agenda or not.
Ginny has put together a memo dated September 24th for our 2013 meeting dates. Any input, Ginny?
Pardon me? No. I gave you the calendar so that just in case, for some reason, the dates that I put down aren't compatible with you, you have a calendar handy that you can pick and decide another
Lynn, comment? Do you have a copy of the?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I've got a comment, other than one date on my book.
We'll have cake.
It'll look good to me.
I'll bring cake.
Yeah, wasn't there one, I looked at them a couple times now, because I thought there was one month that we changed the date, and it actually turned out to be a problem, but I can't figure out.
The only date I'm aware that we've changed in the last couple of years is October.
Right, and this time it doesn't.
Right, it doesn't, because of Halloween.
Yep.
We just didn't feel it was necessary to add traffic to the roads.
You need a motion?
So moved.
First of all, any conflicts? Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
By Maurice. Second. By Mary Ann. Any discussion, any conflicts, any problems?
I have a question.
Any questions?
Only because the 30th of December, we would have our regular meeting. It's not really a holiday, why are we moving that date?
Because December 31st is New Year's Eve, and I thought in case anyone goes away for the holidays...
A lot of people are on vacation.
Okay, I was just making sure that, because you know you're going to have to have your notifications into the newspapers by the first.
Yes, I know, I know.
You know, that's only giving you half a month, really, to do much of anything.
Well, if you as a group want to hold it December 30th, I can change it, it's not recorded anymore.
I think there, we've got too many people on vacation.
That's what I thought.
I'm fine with it, I just wanted to make sure...
Vacation week for the schools and everything, and...
Yeah. We might not even have an application.
Right.
But you're right.
Plus you've got a whole year to work on it.
Yeah. Well, if, if push comes to shove, you still have enough time that you could do it in January. You know, I would officially accept it in the office, and then you would hear it at your next meeting, if it came in after the first.
Okay, we have a second on the motion. All those in favor, motion passes 5-0. Any other business?
I brought some homework.
Okay.
Is this you or me?
That's you.
I've been looking for that. I brought, well, first, we did talk about this, about having the meeting, so this one's no use. There was another one that was, had staples in it. Telling you, you're right about that doodad. You can see I'm suffering with all this paper.
Oh, yeah.
Here we go. December 3rd, there's going to be a meeting of the council, along with any interested folks, on the proposed ordinance, zoning ordinance.
We've got that in our packets, too, I think.
Yeah, well, I brought. Okay, this is the one on, this is, please, it's very important that we go to the meeting and we help the council understand, or whoever's listening, this is not the blight ordinance, this is the fines ordinance, and they're different. And we worked with the planning and zoning folks on this, and I know that some of them will be attending. My suggestion is, is that we all read it, get our heads around it, and this meeting's at 6:50 on December 3rd, it's like 10 minutes. I don't think they're expecting a long meeting on it. But I know, Peter, you plan to attend?
Yes, I do.
And Mo will be there, and I'll be there. But I, I am encouraging us all to get behind getting this passed. This is about chronic violators. It's not about somebody who, who did something and they got cited and they're told to cut it out, and they cut it out. This is somebody who's been told about it repeatedly, and they just stopped doing it long enough so that they can be cited again. And we need to put some teeth into the ordinance, so I'm just asking for...
Who's presenting this to the town council? Is that going to be you or Jose?
It'll either be Ray Warren or Jose.
Okay.
I know Ray Warren did community developments presentation for property maintenance, so I assume it'll be Jose, but if not Jose, then it would be Ray.
Okay, well, it's December 3rd nonetheless. Ginny, I would ask you to do us a favor. Would you please tweak us with a reminder?
Certainly.
And if you wouldn't mind, attach these one more time.
Yes.
And just to back up for a second, on the workshop, I don't know if you all read the email, I'm pretty sure I sent it out to everybody that I was, it's, it was pretty informative, and it was actually a very good day. Some of the speakers were a little bit long-winded, but you got a lot out of it. But again, they started the caveat off, just because we says it doesn't mean you have to go home and do it. Okay? And as much as, and Mr. Brisland is correct, that they, they have this, they had this new case law, and I don't know if you looked at it.
Yeah, I don't think it's any different than the standard that we should have been upholding as a board.
Well, right. I think our board has really been doing that.
You know, I mean, if you look at the Enabling Act and everything else that sets up zoning in this state or any state, it's, that's the position. So I don't think it was that shocking or new.
Yeah. Well, when they spoke...
I mean, maybe for boards that have been more lax, it might be.
Right, but it was kind of interesting, Andrew, that during the meeting, this lawyer kind of glanced over it. You know, he kind of like threw it out, and all of a sudden, he's finished, and I said, excuse me, can you back up? What are you talking about? Okay? And, but there's two parts. The one is, is that if you're sitting on a land use board, and now, as a citizen, you want to be in the audience to talk to another land use board, they're saying you can't. And I'm saying...
If it pertains to the same application, you can't.
Right, right, right.
No, they're, they're actually saying that you should never appear in front of another board.
Ever. Unless it's your application.
No, right, unless it's physically your application.
Yeah.
So, but the statement, when he glossed over that other one, was, this is going to change the way you look at variances and make it very difficult for you to give anybody a variance. But if you're following your rules and regulations...
It's difficult, then.
I mean, it's pretty difficult to give a variance, you know, so, but maybe there's a lot of boards out there that aren't doing what they should be doing, maybe.
So, but again, the event was good, and the third speaker, he was very good, because he, he was very back and forth. But again, they're worth the $40 to go to those. Anyway, that was pretty much all I brought to the table.
We're looking forward to the workshop.
I, I think that the work, bringing these things home and getting us all together with our lawyer running the show... our lawyer running the show educates us all to get us all on the same page. It's very, I, one of the biggest things that I have seen in the few years that I've been on this board is that we have come together as a land use group and started working very well together. We're not stepping on each other's feet, we're not going against the law, or, we're really following it in step to make sure that the public is well-cared-for. So we've done a great job, we just need to continue it.
I agree. Anything else? Mary Ann?
What is this Act Concerning the Liability of Zoning Enforcement Officers? Is this something we need to talk about?
We've talked about that several times.
Right, is there a reason why it was in the packet?
Only because of the, the quarterly letter, in case anybody had any question on what they were talking about, that was just a fill-in.
I got nothing.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 5-0, we are adjourned.